Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Alodiam Morris Pradium ante Colorado. The acronym is AMPAC and the Chief Judge of Coastal Court. Today is Class 156, Class 156. What did we learn in Class 155? Well, always keep in mind, what are we really talking about? We're talking about how can the Moors decolonize the Empire of Morocco, right? So, as of late, we've been going over one of the International Court of Justice cases, regarding an advisory opinion from the case coming on as, what? The Western Sahara of the year 1975, right? So regarding case law. So we're starting to read over this case law, the Western Sahara. We're starting to go over a separate opinion that was written by one of the judges of the International Court of Justice. And what was the judge's name? The Judge who? Judge De Castro of Spain, right? So we're starting to learn that Judge De Castro is really starting to school the Moors on the proper mindset the Moors should have in order to decolonize. He's really teaching the Moors that first of all, we have to make a separation of church and state, right? We have to pledge allegiance to what? The state. You don't pledge allegiance to a religious organization in order to decolonize. You must pledge allegiance to the state because through the state is the only way you can access international law. That's the only way to access law is through a state. You must use the state as a vessel to get access to international law. This is why you must have a tie to the state, right? Because everything is about state rights and the state comes first. It's primary, right? It's paramount to have a state constitution. That way you can enact your laws and become what? Singulatory powers or singatory contracting parties to what? Treaties, conventions, etc. Only states can enact public law, alright? So Moors have to understand this. We have to make an allegiance to the state, alright? So we'll continue today to talk about, you know, a little bit of things we talked about in Class 155, such as we started talking about this word called civilized, right? In Class 155, we started talking about the statutes of the International Court of Justice of 1946 and we went down to Article 38. And Article 38 started to tell the Moors that unfortunately, if you don't recognize[166.34][166.42]international law through statehood, then unfortunately that makes your group of people what? Uncivilized. Therefore, in Article 38 subsection C is in charge, it's all about civilized nations that are practicing what? The customary norms of international law. And international law is recognized by states. So therefore, if you're stateless, right? That technique is going to make you uncivilized because you're not recognizing the sovereignty of the mother state. You're not recognizing the whole state. You're not recognizing what? The external state, which is the true sovereign state. You must recognize the sovereign state. This is where Moors have been making their mistake. We had not pledged allegiance back to the Empire of Morocco. This is where we made our mistake. So therefore, the statutes of the International Court of Justice of 1946, Article 38 subsection C says, "Moors have to emerge as a civilized nation." You see? That's the obligation of Moors. We have to follow instructions, alright? So let's go ahead and get into the class. As the Moors know, I always open up the Constitution. A Constitution is paramount. Without the Constitution, you cannot decolonize. But what type of Constitution? It must be a state constitution, not a chartered Constitution, but a state Constitution, right? So, this is the Constitution of Alodiam Morris Pradium ante Colorado, which is an internal state of the Empire of Morocco, right? So AMPAC is the acronym. AMPAC now is governing over a small territory within the greater Empire of Morocco, right? Because AMPAC's Constitution comes under the external sovereign state coming on as what? The Empire of Morocco, alright? So let's talk about that. So the Empire of Morocco Constitution is paramount as well, alright? So all of the Moors will have a Constitution, an internal Constitution, the same way AMPAC has an internal Constitution, but AMPAC's Constitution comes under the sovereignty of the Constitution for the Empire of Morocco because the Empire of Morocco is the high contracting party name on the treaties. And this is what you call a continuation name. It's a continuation state because we're using what? The ancient name in what? A modern time. So we've gone back to reach back, saying Kofa to get the ancient name and we brought it to the modern status with what? A modern Constitution. But the name is still ancient. You see, you see how you bring the two together? You bring an ancient name in with a modern Constitution and you put the two together. We'll talk more about that today. We'll talk about what's coming on as the continuous, continuous, right? The word continuous is very important in international law. We must be a continuous state. We'll talk about that, okay? Now, we have established the Empire of Morocco Constitution. The Empire of Morocco's Constitution has 106 articles. Keep that in mind because let me go backwards. The Empire of Morocco's Constitution, that's the cover page, it has 106 articles, alright? Then you go backwards, you go back to AMPAC's Constitution, which is an internal Constitution. It also has 106 articles. You're just looking at the cover page, okay? Alright, it's very important for Moors to understand, we must have state constitutions, okay? Now, through the Empire of Morocco, we've set up the government, okay? So what's the name of the state? It's called the Empire of Morocco. What is the Empire of Morocco? It's the external sovereign independent state. And who's head of state? The Sultan. The office of Sultan is head of state, okay? But we also have head of government. That's the executive branch. We have a prime minister who's head of government. We have a legislative branch where we have a Speaker of the House who oversees the House members, the legislators. And then the third branch of government, judicial branch, we have a Chief Judge that oversees all other associate judges. So this is what the Moors would need absence of. We needed a what? We needed a state Constitution, but it had to be in the proper name. What's the proper name? Empire of Morocco, okay? Now, as the Moors know, we're starting to help the Moors to bear to return to the Empire of Morocco to pledge their allegiance to the sovereign independent state coming on the Empire of Morocco. Now, all the Moors subjects, that's who all the copper colored people are according to treaties. Treaties recognize copper colored people as Moorish subject. That's your name in the treaties, alright? So Moors subjects have to do what? They have to start the journey, the due process of returning to Morocco and pledging allegiance to what? The Empire of Morocco, which is the state, right? That's the law. That's what the law says you have to do. What law? Well, the first law was what? What's the first law? What's the paramount law? Listen, where's the paramount law? Well, first, in order to say you're in the Empire of Morocco and you're an external sovereign independent state, well, what recognizes you as a state? Well, it's what? It is the Constitution. So the Moors subjects have to pledge allegiance to the Empire of Morocco Constitution, i.e. the state. That's what you're pledging allegiance to, right? You put your left hand on the Constitution, raise your right hand, pledge allegiance to the state. It's about allegiance, right? So this is what the Moors subjects will do. We will assist you with pledging allegiance to the Empire of Morocco, alright? Now, who's going to help you with that? Will it be the WRC Trusteeship Council, alright? So the WRC Trusteeship Council works on behalf of the Empire of Morocco, right? To be a representative, to help the Moors subjects to check certain boxes so you can start to become a Moroccan national again, right? To help the Moors subjects to pledge allegiance to the Empire of Morocco because it's a due process of administrative reforms boxes that you have to check, alright? We'll continue to help the Moors. Always remember, knowledge is free at the WRC. We will show you how to do this for free. All the forms you fill out are free. Everything we do, we do not charge one penny to help Moors to get back in their proper status as Moroccan nationals. Not one penny, alright? Okay, let's continue because we're helping the Moors right now through AMPAC Study Session, alright? As an educational platform, alright? So the Empire of Morocco has a national flag. Here's a national flag of the empire. This is a Moorish flag. It's a national flag, right? National flag. It represents the entire external state. It represents the country. It represents the empire, right? So when you pledge allegiance to the Empire of Morocco, you pledge allegiance to the Constitution with the state and the state also has a flag. The flag represents the state and the state represents the flag. It's very important to understand, alright? Okay. Now, in Class 155, we started going over the statute of the International Court of Justice. We'll pick up where we left off. We'll keep talking about the Western Sahara case today of 1975 in correlation with the statutes of the International Court of Justice, Article 38, alright? So let's go down to Article 38. Okay, so how does Article 38 read? Okay, Nova?
Article 38, 1. The court whose function is to decide in accordance with international law, such disputes as are submitted to it shall apply. A, international conventions, whether general or particular, establishing rules expressly recognized by the contesting states. B, international custom as evidence of a general practice accepted as law. C, the general principles of law recognized by civilized nations.
Alright, so Article 38 subsection C is very important to the Moors to understand. You must understand that the international law is recognizing two classifications of peoples and two classifications of what? Countries. Section C says, "It must be a general principle of law recognized by civilized nations." What is the general principle of law? What type of law? International law. But what is international law recognized? The power comes through who? The states. You see that? So Article 38, section C says, "The general principles of international law recognized by civilized nations." Who are civilized nations? People all around planet Earth who recognize the mother state, the sovereign independent states. Those are civilized nations who have what? Three branches of government. They're operating what? An organized, dual society of laws through a state. And that state recognizes international law, you see? Now, we got to talk about this some more today because I know in the last class, I talked about civilized nations, but I also talked about who? Uncivilized nation. We're going to break it down a little bit more today because I got to let the Moors see really what's happening. Why are they targeting this word called civilized? Now, remember in Class 155, we looked up to see what the International Legal Commission defined the word civilized nations being. It's about what? About the equality of states, right? They said, "Well, let's not use the word civilized nation. Let's, uh, let's say, let's talk about the equality of civilized states, right? That's more civilized to say. It's about statehood." So they no longer say nation states, they just simply say states. And they used to call them uncivilized nations versus civilized nations. So international law continues to what? Evolve. It continues to evolve. It continues to grow to understand how to identify parties, alright? Let's talk about civilized nations some more today because Moors got to understand, this is law we're looking at. This is not a matter of opinion. This is law. Moors got to understand what the hell is going on with this word civilized nation, alright? Okay, listen, okay. In Class 155, we looked up the word civilized. What does civilized mean? The rec- recap real quick, okay, Nova?
Civilized is an adjective. One, at an advanced stage of social and cultural development.
Pause. Really?
Civilized is an adjective. One, at an advanced stage of social and cultural development. A civilized society.
Alright, so civilized means you're in advanced stage, right? You're in advanced stage. Advanced. We're going to talk about advanced today, alright? Advanced stage of what? You're going from a primitive status into what? An advanced state status. You're going from being tribal to understanding state rights, okay? You're advancing. You're keeping up with the world's advancement. And when you don't advance, you remain what? Uncivilized because you're not keeping up with civilization of the world, right? What's the old saying? Only strong shall survive? If you don't thrive and keep up, you will fall back. You become antiquated, you will become a relic, right? You'll, next you know, you find yourself being what? Unimportant. No one will care about your opinions anymore. This is what people got to understand. So listen, so civilized about advanced stage. Okay, what's uncivilized? What's the opposite? Okay, what's the opposite, Nova? Opposite?
The opposite is uncivilized and barbaric.
Okay, we learned about that in Class 155. So the opposite of civilized is uncivilized, right? It's uncivilized. And he also thought his word barbaric. Now, isn't that interesting? Out of all the words to choose for uncivilized, they choose barbaric. Okay, let's break it down today, alright? We got to break it down today. Who are they talking about when they say barbaric, okay? Listen, what do I have up here on the screen? I have the Kingdom of Morocco's Constitution of the year 2011, okay? King Morocco preamble, their Constitution of the year 2011, and they're going to use the word Berber, right? We're going to learn that even though the word Berber is an old word, they have now brought that word Berber into what? Contemporary law, alright? So they took an old word, ancient word, and brought it into what? A new usage. They kept it going forward, okay? We're talking about two different timelines. Old word is now still a new word because what? Let's look at the timeline. What's considered a timeline of contemporary international law?
45.
Anything after the year 1945 considered what? Contemporary international law. Prior to that, right? Wouldn't they consider it early, early contemporary international law? Early international law, you see? What was prior to early international law? They called it what? Modern international law, right? So let me switch that up. So it's modern international law, then it had what? Early international law, they have what? Contemporary international law. So it's in three phases, okay? So let's get back to point. In the preamble of the King of Morocco, you're going to find out they use the word Berber. So Berber was used a couple hundred years ago. Now they're bringing it forward. We want to talk about the word Berber today to understand how they're tying the word Berber and barbaric to the Moors. Because the Moors have failed to do what? Recognize the Empire of Morocco as what? The sovereign state, alright? Okay, alright, so let's read a little about, a little bit about the preamble, alright? Brother Drake from the top.
With fidelity to its irreversible choice to construct a democratic state of law, the Kingdom of Morocco resolutely pursues the process of consolidation and of reinforcement of the institutions of a modern state, having as its basis the principles of participation, of pluralism, and of good governance. It develops a society of solidarity where all enjoy security, liberty, equality of opportunities, of respect for their dignity, and for social justice within the framework of the principle of correlation between the rights and the duties of the citizenry. A sovereign Muslim state attached to its national unity and to its territorial integrity, the Kingdom of Morocco intends to persevere, I'm excuse me, preserve in its plenitude and its diversity, its one and indivisible national identity. Its unity is forged by the convergence of its Arab Islamist Berber Amazai.
Pause. Alright, so what we're going to do now? We're going to pause right there. Notice in the second paragraph, it just mentioned the King of Morocco is a state and it went right into recognizing the Berbers. It says the word Berber first, then it says Amazai, but it puts Amazai in brackets. You see that? It's in brackets. So they're making a separation of Berber and Amazai, but yet they're saying they're the same people. This is in their Constitution of the year 2011. Let's find out who are the King of Morocco referring to as Berber people, right? Let's make a distinction because first, let's also understand, they're also talking about who? Just a moment. They're talking about Moroccan people in the preamble, but they're also talking about who? They're talking about Berbers. We got to find out what's going on with the Berbers, okay? It's tied to what? To word what? Barbaric, barbarie, right? We're going to learn about that today. We have to understand what is international law trying to tell the Moors if the Moors want to decolonize. They're giving Moors the answer to the test, but Moors have to go back and research and actually read to understand, to put this in sequential order, to understand how do we get out of the status of being recognized as Berbers versus us being what? A civilized nation because we recognize now the Empire of Morocco state. Got to learn about this, okay? Listen, okay, so what do we have up here? This is about the Berbers, the Amazai people, right? The Amazai people in the Kingdom of Morocco. This is their flag, okay? And they're called the Berbers. But you see right underneath this, it says Amazais? But why they call them by two different names? See, the word Berber is a derogatory term and the Amazai people is the name of the tribe, okay? Let's learn a little bit about this word Berber because Moors have to understand what either that the international community is trying to tell you about the Moors, alright? Just a moment. Okay, Brother Drake from the top.
Berbers or the Berber peoples, also called by their indom- um, synonym, Amazai or Amazai, are a diverse grouping of distinct ethnic groups indigenous to North Africa who predate the arrival of Arabs in the Arab migrations to the Maghrib.
Pause. Alright, we'll take it from the top. Berbers or the Berber peoples, also called by their synonym, Amazai or Amazin, are diverse grouping of distinct ethnic groups indigenous to North Africa who predate the arrival of Arabs in the Arab migration to the Maghrib. So the Berbers, that, right? So the Berbers, who they call the Amazai people, were there before the Arabs showed up, right? This is Wikipedia, right? So what should be the first understanding? Okay, the rights of indigenous people. It says the Amazai people are indigenous. Who's not indigenous? The Arabs. And they already know that. You're not telling them something they don't already know. The Arabs know they didn't come into the territories of what was called North Africa until the 600s, right? Sometime after the year 638. After the year 638 is when the Arabs started to come from Arabia into the territories, right? But what's coming on today is Egypt all the way to Morocco, etc., alright? That must be understood, alright? But they turn around and they call the people Berbers. You see that? But the word Berber, in fact, is put into the Constitution of the Kingdom of Morocco, that's what we got up here, the Constitution, King Morocco of the year 2011, refers to people as Berbers and Amazai. But let's, let's get an understanding, what does Wikipedia say about this word, Berber? Okay, let's read just a little bit more about it. Because we got to understand, what is international law trying to tell the Moors? Okay, Brother Drake from the top.
Berbers or the Berber peoples, also called by their synonym, Amazai or Amazin, are a diverse grouping of distinct ethnic groups indigenous to North Africa who predate the arrival of Arabs in the Arab migrations to the Maghrib. Their main connections are identified by the usage of Berber languages, most of them mutually unintelligible, which are part of the Afro-African language family. They are indigenous to the Maghrib region of North Africa where they live in scattered communities across parts of Morocco, Algeria, Libya, and to a lesser extent Tunisia, Mauritania, Northern Mali, and Northern Niger. Smaller Berber communities are also found in Burkina Faso and Egypt's Amsewa oasis. Descended from Stone Age tribes of North Africa, accounts of the Amazin were first mentioned in ancient Egyptian writings from about 2000 BCE. Berber languages spread westward from the Nile Valley across the Northern Sahara into the Maghrib. A series of Berber peoples such as the Mari, Masili, Muslami, Ghetuli, and Garamontes gave rise to Berber kingdoms such as Numidia and Mauritania. Other kingdoms appeared in late antiquity such as Altava, Aris, Orsens, and Hana. Berber kingdoms were eventually suppressed by the Arab conquest of the 7th and 8th century CE. This started a process of cultural and linguistic assimilation known as Arabization, which influenced, which influenced the Berber population.
Pause. So what are we learning here? About the Berber kingdoms, right? Other kingdoms appeared in late antiquity such as Altova, Aris, Corresens, and Hana. Hana. Berber kingdoms were eventually suppressed by the Arab conquest of the 7th and 8th centuries, you see? So the Arabs came in in the 600s, you know, from after, after 638, right? So from 638 all the way around to about 60 years, 681, the Arabs took over North Africa and suppressed the Moors. You must understand the word Berber and Amazai is going to go back to the word More, alright? So you got to understand what's happening here, okay? So it says right here, Arabization, right? What happened? The Moors became what? They got abrenized.
Assimilated.
Assimilated into the Arab culture and Arab language and Arab religion. Just like in quote unquote, the Americas, what happened to the Moors in the Americas? The Americans got, the Moors got what? Americanized, see? So Moors, their culture and their identity is being taken over by who? Colonists and people seeking conquest over Moors. You got to understand what's happening here, alright? So now they've listed the Moors as what? Berbers and Amazai people. You're going to learn a little bit more, alright? Because we're talking about the statutes of the International Court of Justice, Article 38, section C, say we have to be a civilized nation, which you're going to understand, they've been keeping the Moors suppressed in an uncivilized status instead of Moors emerging as a sovereign independent state to be what? A civilized nation. We're going to learn about that. This is important when we're going over. Okay, let's start right here.
Arabization involved the spread of Arabic language and Arab culture among the Berbers, leading to the adoption of Arabic.
Pause. See that word adoption? You see what's happening? What happened to the Moors? The Moors are adopting other people's languages, culture, and religion. We're being, we got adopted by the Arabs and we got adopted by the colonists. This word adoption is very important to understand. Adoption is tied to the word what? Naturalization. The Moors are being naturalized all over planet Earth by people coming in to perform what? Conquest, annexation, settlement into the territories. You see what's happening? We've been adopted. So we start adopting other people's culture, okay? Let's start right here again.
Arabization involved the spread of Arabic language and Arab culture among the Berbers, leading to the adoption of Arabic as the primary language and conversion to Islam.
Read that again.
Arabization involved the spread of Arabic language and Arab culture among the Berbers, leading to the adoption of Arabic as the primary language and conversion to Islam.
Continue.
Notably, the Arab migrations to the Maghrib from the 7th century to the 17th century accelerated this process. While local Arab dynasties came to rule parts of the Maghrib after the 7th century, Berber tribes remained powerful political forces and founded new ruling dynasties in the 10th and 11th centuries. Berber tribes remained powerful political forces and founded new ruling dynasties in the tenth and eleventh centuries. Such as the Zirids, uh, Hamadid, um, Hamadids. Various Zenada principalities in the Western Maghrib. And several, um, Typha kingdoms in Al-Andalus. Islam later provided the ideological stimulus for the rise of fresh Berber empires. The Amor- uh, Amor- uh, Amorids and Almohads. In the eleventh to thirteenth centuries, their Berber successors, the Maronids. The Zionids and the Hafisids continued to rule until the sixteenth century. Continued to rule until the sixteenth century. From the sixteenth century onward, the process continued in the absence of Berber dynasties. In Morocco, they were replaced by Arabs claiming descent from the Islamic prophet Muhammad.
Pause, so read this last sentence again.
From the sixteenth century onward, the process continued in the absence of Berber dynasties. In Morocco, they were replaced by Arabs claiming descent from the Islamic prophet Muhammad.
So the Arabs took over Morocco. The Arabs took over all of the Moors empires along with the colonists, so, so the colonists took over the Moors empires. And so are the Arabs. And the colonists and the Arabs turned around and called the Moors Berbers. The number for Berbers what? Barbarian, right? Okay, let's listen. Listen, we're gonna type in the word Berber. B E R, B E R, there it is, Berber. Let's look it up at Amagi Dictionary. Who's the Berbers? We gotta get understanding Moors. We, we have to understand, what is the International Court of Justice? Trying to tell us from Article thirty-eight, section C is about civilized nations. So if they're talking about civilized nation, then they must be also talking about what? Uncivilized nation. Let's get an understanding, who are they talking about, okay? Alright, uh, brother Drake.
Uh, Berber, eighteen-twenty noun, eighteen-thirty-two adjective. From the Arabic name for the peoples living in the mountains and deserts of North Africa, west of Egypt. Perhaps ultimately, oh, perhaps ultimately from Greek Barbaros. Barbarians, see Barbary by eighteen-fifty-four as a name of their Hymitic language.
Alright, so Berber is coming on the same word as Barbary. So Berber and Barbary, right, are similar words, right? Now watch this, you gotta pay close attention. We looked up the word Berber, but guess what other word falls under Berber? Watch this. Watch how I scroll down, scroll down. Look what other word falls in the Berber. Morocco, you seen that? So Morocco fell under the definition of Berber. And then Morocco as the country, see right here, Morocco, country. So Morocco is a country, the empire Morocco is a country, right? And look who they tying the word Morocco to. Tied to the word Moor, you see that? The word Moor. But it's also tied to the word what? Berber, you see it? So Berber. Berber and Moor. You see that? Berber and Moor. But it's also about what? Moroccans. So Morocco, the nationality of Morocco is Moroccan. But Moroccan is tied also to the word what? Berber, Berber, and Moor, see that? So the Moors are Moroccans. But when the Moors live an antiquated lifestyle, an ancient lifestyle. They put them under Berber because the Moors are not recognizing what? The Empire Morocco State. Listen, now, let's look up the definition of what? Barbary. I'm gonna make sense of this, just, just be patient with me. So in the Berber, cause King Morocco listed the Moors as Berbers and got them subjugated. So now let's understand the word Barbary, what does Barbary mean, okay? Cause it's also tied to Morocco and the Moors. Okay, Barbary, okay, let's just read a little bit about Barbary. We gotta understand these Moors, cause we gotta get these false labels of, off of us. And get back to a civilized status, cause they listed us under Barbary and Berber and Barbarian. Uncivilized, well, how do we get out of that? We're gonna learn today, how do we get that, that political status off of us, okay? Let's build up, let's build up. Okay, brother Drake, Barbary.
Barbary, um, see thirteen-hundred, foreign lands, especially non-Christian lands. From Latin barbaria, foreign country, from barbarous, uh, barbarous, strange foreign. See barbarian, a noun. The meaning, um, Syriacan nations on coastal North Africa. Is attested from the fifteen-nineties via French, old French Barbary. From Arabic Babar, Berber, ancient Arabic name for the inhabitants of North Africa beyond Egypt.
Alright, so Berber and Barbary are connected, right? Okay, listen, let's read this last, these last two paragraphs, right here.
Also in Middle English, um, see fourteen-hundred. Native of the Barbary coast, meaning rude, wild person, is from the sixteen-tens. Occasionally in, uh, nineteenth century. Um, English distinguished from savage noun as being a step closer to civilization. Sometimes in reference to Renaissance Italy, a non-Italian. It was also used to translate the usual Chinese word of contempt for foreigners. Barbarian applies to whatever pertains to the life of an uncivilized people. Without special reference to its moral aspects. Barbarous properly expresses the bad side of barbarian life and character. Especially its inhumanity or cruelty as a barbarous act. Barbari- uh, barbaric expresses the characteristic love of barbarians for adornment. Ma- uh, magnificence, noise, et cetera, but it is not commonly applied to persons. It implies the lack of cultivated taste, Century Dictionary eighteen-eighty-nine.
Alright, so look what they put in there, the barbarian. Barbarian, I know it's a little like, barbarian applies to whatever pertains to the life. Of an uncivilized people. Barbarian pertains to the life of uncivilized people, you see that? Right, so you go back now to the International Court of Justice, Article thirty-eight. International Court of Justice, statutes of the International Court of Justice. Article thirty-eight talk, and section C talks about civilized nations. What's the opposite of civilized nations? Uncivilized. Okay, so we learned under the definition of civilized. Okay, under the definition of civilized, what did we learn about the opposite of civilized? Okay, the opposite of civilized was uncivilized, and they threw this word barbaric. You see what they're trying to tell you, gotta, you gotta chase these words backwards. You see, it's all about looking up words, Moors must become what? Wordsmiths. Moors must become wordsmiths. We have to stop skimming words, we must read to understand what's the definition of words to understand the meaning in law. Okay, so civilized means people who recognize the state, uncivilized people are barbaric, they're talking about the Berbers. Right, let's go back to Berber. So on the definition, at Amagi Dictionary, barbarian. Talked about the Berbers and the Barbarians, the Barbarians, down here at the bottom. It says barbarian applies to whatever pertains to the life. Of uncivilized people, so who are the uncivilized people they're talking about? Moors. That are falsely branded as what? Berbers. Gotta see what's happening here. Okay, listen, what do I have up here on the screen? I gotta take a moment and say this to the Moors. First, let's read, uh, brother Drake.
The Age of Pisces and the Transition into Aquarius. Um, March first, twenty-twenty-one, according to this scheme. The eleventh house of the Age of Pisces was an Aquaria period running from eighteen forty-three to twenty-twenty-two. Development since eighteen forty-three have flooded the collective with the archetypes, ideas, and symbols of Aquarius.
Alright, so when I first came in the movement as a Moor, back in the year twenty-eighteen. One of the first thing the Moors was telling me is what? They, they kept trying to tell me, there's been a what? It's a transition of time that's never been happening. They said, we're going from the Age of Pisces and transitioning into Aquarius. This is what the Moors kept telling me. They said, what, what happened in the Age of Pisces cannot live in the Age of Aquarius. They say the Age of Pisces has remained in the past. And it gotta transition into Aquarius. Aquarius represents what? Water, water flows. Pisces represents what? Stagnation, it's old, it's in the past. But it must be a transition, see this word transition? This is called what? Pathway House. That's called what? Twilight Zone. That's called what? Buffering. So the Moors are buffering between the Pisces era and Aquarius era. What's in Pisces?
Everybody's pledge allegiance to what? Religious orders.
What's Aquarius? Everybody's pledge allegiance to what? States. What's Pisces? That's uncivilized nations. What's Aquarius? Civilized nations. The Moors are supposed to transition from Pisces into Aquarius and pledge allegiance to the Empire Morocco. State, but what have the Moors been doing for over a hundred years? They continue to pledge allegiance under the Pisces era to what? Religious organizations. All the Moors, i.e. copper-colored people, are all stuck in arrears. They're all stuck in an antiquated status of Pisces. But when I first came in the movement, they told me it's all about Aquarius. Well, I can't tell, cause the Moors refused to transition. And the ones who are trying to transition keep trying to pull Pisces. Type of mentality and theology into Aquarius, and they keep wondering why it's not working. Cause Pisces is over. Now look, I, I thought it was very interesting, this next, this next piece somebody wrote, uh, Drake.
The Age of Aquarius versus the Age of Pisces. March fifth, twenty-twenty-four, remnants of the earlier ages do not dissipate. Once the cosmic chapter ends. And the shadow expressions of the Piscean age will still reign in the collective. Deception, distrust, escapism through substances and distractions.
You see that? So the Piscean era, the Piscean era won't let go, it's trying to do what? Create confusion in the Aquarius era. I'm gonna say it again, we read it, remnants of the early ages do not dissipate once the cosmic chapter ends. And the shadow expression of Piscean age still reign in the collective, what? Mentality. Of what? Deception, distrust, escapism through substance and distractions, i.e. confusion. Cause Moors won't let go of the Piscean era in order to embrace and accept Aquarius. This is what's happening with the Moors. This is what's happening with the Black community too. The Black community has put all their faith in what? Religious organizations. They don't understand it's all about decolonization, cause they keep wanting their equal rights. How do you get equal rights as Black people? First of all, you gotta understand you're not Black. Cause Black is not a nationality, and the Age of Aquarius is all about state rights, you gotta decolonize. And recognize the state, but what's the name of the state that Black people should be recognizing? It's called the Empire Morocco, and what's the nationality? Moroccan. That's Aquarius. But Age of Pisces won't let go. You see what's happening? I'm gonna read it again. March fifth, twenty-twenty-four, remnants of the early ages do not dissipate. Once the cosmic chapter ends, and the shadow expression of the Piscean age still reign in the collective. Deception, distrust, escapism through substance and distractions, it's all in your head, you won't let it go. It's cause you don't study, that's why, and you refuse to study, you don't wanna know what's going on in the Aquarius era, era. But all the Moors told me, when I came in this movement in twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen, they kept trying to tell me. The Piscean era can't survive in Aquarius. Then why are Moors still trying to pull those old theories into the Piscean? Excuse me, why they trying to pull Piscean theories into Aquarius? Why are they doing it? Why are they doing it? See, I'm learning that Moors are hypocrites, this is what I'm learning, I'm learning the truth. As I study Moors, and I study international law, cause international law say you must be what? Civilized nation, civilized nation, civilized mean what? An advanced stage. How are you gonna advance to Aquarius if you still stuck in Pisces? Moors don't wanna advance, and they keep blaming white people for their problems. But guess what white people understand? White people understand what? Aquarius era, because they're, they're doing what? They're ruling with what? States. White people understand the power of states through Aquarius, and Moors are stuck back here in the Piscean era. This is what's happening. And they blaming white folks, and white folks is only here at an advanced stage. And the rest of the world is back here in Pisces, talking about their religious organizations. And white folks is ruling the world through states through Aquarius. This is what's happening. The Moors suffering from what? It's deception, what's going on with this word deception? It's deception. There's deception going on in our communities, cause the, the leaders of our communities are deceiving the people, lying to them. There's distrust because the Moors got a thousand different social groups out there, they're affiliated to another movement form, forward. It's escapism, cause everybody escapes, cause they blaming the white man for all their problems, and then what? They got substances and distractions. They won't study international law. And they try to find a scapegoat, and they blaming on the white man. This is the problem with the Moors. This is a problem with the Black community, I'm telling you the truth. So I'm gonna ask the Moors right now, are we operating in Aquarius or Moors still stuck in Piscean era? That's the question. And it's easy to answer. Let me answer it for you, let's take it to the board. If the Moors want sovereignty, then they must adhere to Article thirty-eight, section C. Of the statutes of International Court of Justice as follows, right, we're talking law. What does Article thirty-eight, section C say? It says what? The general principles of law recognized by civilized nations. What a civilized nation recognize? Aquarius, which is about state rights. What do uncivilized recognize? Uncivilized people keep staying back here in Pisces, and they're not recognizing state rights. What state? The Empire Morocco, let's talk about it, question. How do Moors emerge as a civilized nation of people? That's the question, let's read the question again. How do Moors emerge as a civilized nation of people? That's the question, answer. The Moors must unite under the nationality of Moroccan. And pledge our allegiance to the Empire of Morocco. As a continuous ancient and modern state. Per the principles of international law, that's the answer, let's read the question and answer again. Question, how do Moors emerge as a civilized nation of people? What the answer is, the Moors must unite under the nationality of Moroccan. And pledge our allegiance to the Empire of Morocco as a continuous ancient and modern state. Per the principles of international law, that's the answer. And you know what international law is all about? It's called contemporary law, and contemporary law is all about what? Aquarius. It's about state rights, about allegiance to the state, and not your allegiance to Piscean era, it was all about what? Religion. This is the problem with our people, with our communities. They're not asking the question, how's the white man ruling over us? The white man's controlling what? States. Aquarius is about state rights. For civilized nations. Uncivilized nations are still stuck in Piscean era, that's the bottom line. But what's the answer? How do we get out of an uncivilized status as Berbers? How do we get out of an uncivilized status as Barbarians? How do we get out of that sta- status of Barbary? Well, the answer is easy. We gotta just simply pledge our allegiance to the Empire Morocco state. Listen, I'm not done talking about Barbary. Listen. Okay, what do I have up here? I have up here Yale Law School. This is Yale Law School Law Library, okay? So Yale is a distinguished school of law, correct? The whole world knows about Yale.
Yeah.
Look how Yale describes the Morris Treaties. Listen, the Moors know about this. Watch this. The Morris Treaties at Yale are listed as what? The Barbary Treaties. You see that? The Barbary Treaty. Why they call them the Barbary Treaties? Okay, first of all, let's look at uh, let's look at what treaties are they talking about? They're talking about the Treaties of Peace and Friendship, all the Moore's Treaties. Right? The Treaties with who? Morocco. The Treaties with Morocco, the Barbary Treaties. The Treaties with Morocco Barbary, i.e. Berber, i.e. Barbarian, i.e. what? Uncivilized. The world was moving forward and leaving the Moors in arrears. And they didn't want to call you Moors. They wanted to call you Barbarians. This is why they call the Moors in the hood, you go to what? The barber shop? The barber shop for the barbarians because the Moors have yet to pledge their allegiance to their own independent Empire Morocco state. There you are. Barbary. For Berbers, Barbarians. This is what they list us as. But we can fix it. How do we fix it? We must do what? We must do what? Emerge as a sovereign independent state to recognize the Empire Morocco. Once you pledge your allegiance to the Empire Morocco, you're now establishing what? A civilized nation. That's the answer to the test. You gotta see what's happening. And this is Yale University calling us Barbaries. Listen, okay, Moors, let's start talking about the solution. It's problem solution, right? How do we get this nom de guerre word off of us? What's a nom de guerre? That's a word used in war, right? They called us Berbers, Barbaries, Barbarians, right? Misnomers such as Amazai. But the reality is the treaty said we're what? Moors. The treaty said we're what? Moroccans. Therefore, the Moors, i.e. the Moroccans, have to pledge allegiance to what? The Empire Morocco. So now let's go over the Western Sahara case of nineteen seventy five. Because Judge De Castro is dropping jewels that the Moors should have known about since nineteen seventy five. What I'm reading out loud to you is fifty years old and the Moors never knew nothing about this. Nothing. So let's study, Moors, because we gotta get out of this uncivilized status that the whole world thinks that the Moors are in. They know the Moors are what? Stuck in the past. The Moors still stuck in Piscean era. They gotta move forward. Aquarius with the rest of worlds and Aquarius, the Moors in Piscean. All right, so first things first. What was, who was Judge De Castro talking about in this case? This is page one fifty and clearly you can see the Western Sahara separate opinion of Judge Judge De Castro, page one fifty. And he's talking about who? The Sultan's independent authority. And who else? The independent Moors. You see that? It's all about the Sultan and the independent Moors. And when you're talking about the Moors, you have to talk about the Sultan. When you talk about Sultan, you have to talk about the Moors. See how they put them in the same paragraph? So who is the authority? Oh, the Empire Morocco tells you, look what the ICJ is saying. This judge is telling you already. Who is the authority in Morocco? Who is the Sultan? In the treaties, he is what? The independent authority. The Sultan oversees the entire Empire Morocco. The whole world knows this. Okay, listen. Let's learn a little bit more about what the Moors need to do to get our sovereign powers back. Okay, listen. Okay, today, we're gonna read about four or five pages. Start at page one sixty six. This is Western Sahara of nineteen seventy five, separate opinion of Judge De Castro, right? It's about decolonization. It's about Moors. It's about the Sultan. It's about the Empire Morocco. Right? But at the time in nineteen seventy five, the International Court of Justice was dealing with the king of the kingdom Morocco, who was trying to still make claims as if he was a Sultan. And he's no longer the Sultan. But what the Moors need to understand, how do we get our own sovereignty back of the Empire Morocco? Well, let's learn about it, okay? Okay, uh, Brother Drake from the top.
Uh, Western Sahara, separate opinion, De Castro, page one sixty six, part three. Even on the hypothesis of the court concluding that it had no competence to reply to a questio of Fassi, Fassi such as that of the existence of legal ties at the time of colonization by Spain. It would not have followed that the court had no competence to reply to the request for an advisory opinion.
Continue.
One, legal validity of Resolution thirty two ninety two. It is important to interpret General Assembly Resolution thirty two ninety two most carefully, which is not an easy task. The resolution is the result of a compromise. The representative of the Ivory Coast who supported the resolution did not conceal the fact that it is, that it is an unusual, unusual resolution and that it might perhaps not be entirely satisfactory. Uh, is that case law? Um, the fact that, excuse me, the fact was that the first Moroccan draft, which amounted to a request to the court to give an opinion on its alleged ties of sovereignty, legal ties over Western Sahara, met with vigorous opposition. Members of the African group and other members of the fourth committee were afraid that a possible recognition of those titles by the court might be considered as having sufficient validity to justify the immediate, the immediate integration of Western Sahara with the Kingdom of Morocco. In disregard of the rights of the population of the Sahara.
Pause. Okay, now that we've got through that initial reading, now pay pay close attention. Judge De Castro is getting ready to tell the Moors how to get their sovereign independence back away from the colonists. But he's gonna talk about two things today. He's gonna talk about contemporary international law, which is the Charter of the United Nations, including Resolution fifteen fourteen of year nineteen sixty. So you're gonna talk about the Charter of the United Nations in combination with Resolution fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty, which is about what? The granting of independence to what? Colonized countries and peoples. That's the title of it. But he's also gonna go back retroactively to talk about previous history of the treaties. So you're gonna talk about the past and he gonna talk about the present of international law. He gonna say, how do you bring international law in combination with old treaties and old history? How do you bring these two things together, right, to create harmony of law? Law of the past and law of the present of contemporary international law. How do you get uncivilized people into a civilized status? How do you bring them forward in an advanced stage? Judge De Castro is gonna tell the Moors how to get our sovereign rights back. Gotta pay attention. Okay, right here, Brother Drake. Consequently.
Consequently, so as to avoid such a conclusion at the very beginning of the resolution, the General Assembly recalls its Resolution fifteen fourteen containing the Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries and Peoples.
Pause. So right there, read that again.
Consequently, so as to avoid such a conclusion at the very beginning of the resolution, the General Assembly recalls its Resolution fifteen fourteen containing the Declaration on the Granting of Independence to colonial countries and peoples.
So Judge De Castro is already pointing out what contemporary international law recognizes the General Assembly's resolution coming on its Resolution fifteen fourteen of December fourteenth of nineteen sixty that gave who certain powers? It gave Moors the right to decolonize by using contemporary international law in order to get the the Moors into what status? Civilized. You see what's happening? So the judge is now explaining to Moors, this is how you beat the King Morocco's false claim. And this is how you beat Spain's claim. This is how you decolonize. You gotta pay attention to what's happening. We're gonna talk about new law and old law. Listen. Okay, start right here.
Moreover, there is another reference to the same resolution in operative paragraph three, which deals with the policy for decolonization to be followed by the General Assembly. Moreover, there is a careful recall of the eight resolutions on decolonization and the independence of Western Sahara. Lastly, the right of the population of Western Sahara to self determination is reaffirmed in accordance with Resolution fifteen fourteen.
You see what Judge De Castro is doing? He's doubling down on Resolution fifteen fourteen. Right? He mentions it twice. He said, if these Moors want to decolonize and they want their independence, they have to use contemporary international law of Resolution fifteen fourteen. Right? In combination with what? They needed a modern constitution that recognized their state. All right? Now pay attention. He's talking about new contemporary law. Okay, gotta pay attention.
In the text of Resolution thirty two ninety two, two contradictory positions can be seen side by side, or at least apparently. What is to be done? It did not seem to me that the right approach was to adopt a restrictive or negative interpretation that would lead to the conclusion that the request for an advisory opinion was without object. The court should rather do its best to assist the General Assembly in the task of decolonization.
You see what he's telling the Moors? He's telling the Moors, Moors, if you want to decolonize and get rid of the colonists, then you must use Resolution fifteen fourteen of the Charter of the United Nations. So you got the Charter of the United Nations nineteen forty five and and they, the General Assembly members created Resolution fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty. So the International Court of Justice is already telling the General Assembly members, um, all the things Moors should be talking about is decolonization. And using international law as their legal argument. Because I'm gonna remind the Moors of something. Rahm Emanuel, the the mayor of Chicago, Illinois, back in the year twenty twelve, wrote in a proclamation that the Moors' rights were guaranteed in the Charter of the United Nations regarding the rights of who? Indigenous people. Who the indigenous people? The Moors, who are falsely branded as what? Berbers. You see what's happening? So at the ICJ in nineteen seventy five, fifty years ago, Judge De Castro is already telling the Moors, you want to decolonize, you need to use Resolution fifteen fourteen and the Charter of the United Nations. Let's continue. The court.
The court was, in my view, in a position to arrive at a positive interpretation while taking account of the spirit of compromise that led to the adoption of the resolution as well as of its purpose and remaining in harmony with the text of the question put to the court. The reason for the request for an advisory opinion is, we are told that it was noted that during the discussion in the assembly, a legal controversy arose. It should be noted that the legal controversy arose during the during the discussion, particularly in the fourth committee. That clarification is most valuable. It tends to rule out the possibility that the sole object of the question was to ascertain whether ties existed for that which would have been a question of fact and not of legal controversy. The controversy, it is added, arose during the discussion and the question of the existence of ties was not even touched upon during the discussion in the fourth committee. The discussion centered on the clash between two opposing positions. The claim to the territory on the basis of ties said to be in existence at the time of de- of colonization by Spain and the principle of self determination.
All right, so Judge De Castro is making the distinction between colonization and self determination, right? So the Moors, in order to have self determination, they have to declare their independence and they have to recognize and pledge allegiance to the sovereign independent state or their remaining colonized people. So the judge is like, we should, we should be talking about self determination of the Moors and not talking about the Kingdom of Morocco's claim to a territory. The King Morocco is a brand new name on planet Earth. King Morocco is not the empire. He told you at the beginning, who has sovereign authority of the empire? He said, who? The Sultan. Not the king. This is what Judge De Castro is pointing out. So he's telling Morocco, listen, you got a Sultan? If the answer is no, then you gotta stop making this false claim and leave it up to the Moors to determine their own self determination to recognize the Empire Morocco and the real Sultan. You see what's happening? Judge De Castro was pinning them down, said, we're gonna talk about specifics. But Judge De Castro is also gonna talk about contemporary international law. And he's also gonna talk about the old treaties. Listen, continue.
General Assembly Resolution thirty two ninety two then justifies the request for an advisory opinion by saying that in the light of the advisory opinion to be given, the General Assembly will decide on the policy to be followed in order to accelerate the decolonization process in the territory in accordance with Resolution fifteen fourteen.
Pause. Read that again. How do you, how do you accelerate decolonization? Read it again.
So, uh, General Assembly Resolution thirty two ninety two then justifies the request for an advisory opinion by saying that in the light of the advisory opinion to be given, the General Assembly will decide on the policy to be followed in order to accelerate the decolonization process in the territory in accordance with Resolution fifteen fourteen.
So what expedites decolonization? Resolution fifteen fourteen. Resolution fifteen fourteen is an attachment to what? The Charter of the United Nations. This is what Rahm Emanuel tried to tell the Moors back in twenty twelve. Rahm Emanuel is attachment to who? Barack H. Obama, who tried to tell the whole world about the Moors back in two thousand nine, that the Moors should have been enforcing their treaty rights in addition to modern international law. And modern international law said the Moors had to become a civilized nation by pledging allegiance to the sovereign independent state called the Empire of Morocco, that the Moors commonly called what? The Moroccan Empire. But they're not pledging allegiance to the Moroccan Empire. They're pledging allegiance to what? Religious organizations. Listen. So how do you expedite decolonization? You expedite it, right? Accelerate. How do you accelerate decolonization? How do you accelerate decolonization process? It's through Resolution fifteen fourteen. Now let me ask the Moors a question. Have your grand sheiks ever read uh, Resolution fifteen fourteen out loud to you? No. Has Louis Farrakhan ever read Resolution fourteen out loud to you? No. Anybody at the HBCUs reading Resolution fifteen fourteen out loud to you?
No.
No. Is anybody reading it during Black History Month? You got a whole month to read it. You got four weeks to read it out loud. Do they ever read Resolution fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty out loud? No. You gotta see, we've been sold out. This, this judge is talking about this in nineteen seventy five. That was fifty years ago. They're talking about Moors, the Sultan, the Empire Morocco, and they're saying, how can these Moors decolonize and how can they accelerate decolonization? By enforcing contemporary international law. Now let me ask the Moors a question. Does any of the grand sheiks tell the Moors to read the Charter of the United Nations? No. Does Louis Farrakhan tell you to read the Charter of the United Nations? No. Anybody at the HBCU telling you to read the Charter of the United Nations? No. Do they read the Charter of the United Nations out loud during Black History Month? No. You gotta see, we've been sold out. Nobody wants to read public law of international law out loud because it would do what? It would do what? It would accelerate decolonization. It would accelerate decolonization. We've been sold out by grand sheiks. We've been sold out by people who are running religious corporations. What did good brother Malcolm X tell the Moors? He said, put your religion in the closet. What did good brother John Henry Clark tell you? He said, if they ain't done you no good by now, get rid of it. And the whole time, the answers to our problems has been in front of us the whole time regarding law. So they tell everybody, we're black. We ain't black. We're Moroccans. Let's take it to the board. What's the answer to our problem? Stop blaming white people and read the damn board. What does it say? If the Moors want sovereignty, then they must adhere to Article thirty-eight, Section C of the statutes of the International Court of Justice as follows. What is Article thirty-eight, Section C about? About the general principles of international law recognized by civilized nations. What do civilized nations do? Okay, here's a question for the Moors. How do Moors emerge as a civilized nation of people? That's the question. Answer? The Moors must unite under the nationality of Moroccan and pledge our allegiance to the Empire Morocco as a continuous ancient and modern state per the principles of international law. And what do you do to help you get your sovereign rights back? You do what? You accelerate decolonization process through Resolution fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty. Resolution fifteen fourteen been out since nineteen sixty? Sixty-five years ago. Sixty-five years ago. You gotta see what's happening? Okay. We could've fixed this sixty-five years ago. Western Sahara case came out nineteen seventy-five. We could've fixed this fifty years ago. But nah, we being sold out. Everybody got their pyramid scheme going on. Okay. It's coming to an end, though. It's coming to an end. I'm talking to all you so-called leaders in our communities. It's coming to an end. It is coming to the end. Okay. Alright, let's take it from here. Um, okay, Brother Dre, from right here. So how are we gonna decolonize? Okay. How do we, how do we get our sovereign rights back as a people? We must do what? Brother Dre, take it from here.
To accelerate the decolonization process in the territory in accordance with Resolution fifteen fourteen in the best possible conditions. On the hypothesis that the question asked concerns the existence of ties in advisory opinion by the court stating that Morocco or the, uh, Martenian entity did have ties with the territory at the time of colonization by Spain, would still leave the General Assembly in the same difficulty that of deciding which of the two arguments, integration or subdetermination, it should favor.
Pause, so Judge Castro's saying, so what are we arguing about here in the court? Are we talking about self-determination of these Moors so they have a right to emerge as a sovereign, independent state? Or are we sitting here trying to subjugate the Moors on the integration to put them under the Kingdom of Morocco? Because the only way these Moors can really pledge their allegiance is either they have their own state or they pledge allegiance back to Empire Morocco and recognize His Majesty the Sultan. But instead, the King Morocco was trying to put the Moors under integration. You see? So Judge Ca, Castro is like, uh, yeah, I see the game is being played here. Mister King, you're not the Sultan. You can't retroactively go back and claim lands under a brand-new name called Kingdom of Morocco. Listen, continue.
The origin, the origin of the real difficulty to be removed and of the doubts to be cleared up lies in the way which Morocco impliedly gives to its alleged legal ties with the territory. Morocco called in question all the resolutions concerning the self-determination of the Sahara when its representative in the General Assembly said, "All the resolutions and recommendations which have been voted by the General Assembly in the previous ten years concern the main question that of knowing whether the two Saharan provinces of Sakia El Hamra and Rio de Oro belong to a certain sovereignty. Does the existence supposing improved of alleged ties of Morocco or of Mauritania? Would the territory at the time of colonization by Spain render the resolutions on the self-determination and the independence of Western Sahara ineffective?" That was underlying question during the General Assembly's debates, and there is reason to suppose that it was not unconnected with the request to the court for an advisory opinion. These considerations may be of assistance in finding the true meaning of the words. What were the ties? They may be interpreted as meaning, what was the quality of those ties? What was their strength and their potential validity? To interpret them thus would not be to stretch the literal meaning of the words and such an interpretation fits most closely with the purpose of the resolution. To ask whether ties or rights at a given time is to go into question, is, is, is to go into the question of the consequences that they might have in the future. A right exists or has, uh, present validity according to the powers which it confers for future exercise, the value of a right lies in the power it gives, its potential content in space and time, its capacity for continued existence or resistance to new events, changes in the law, and possible reasons for its extinction.
Alright, so, so, so Judge Castro is setting up a move. What is he setting up? He's ready to start asking the question. Questions of what? Intertemporal law. Okay, we're about to get into a word called intertemporal law. The Moors have to understand this. What is the question of intertemporal law? Okay, first of all, what is intertemporal law? Okay. We gotta understand this, Moors. We, we, we have to study. Okay, Brother Dre?
Uh, applicability of legal norms over time. Intertemporal international law governs the applicability of legal norms over time. It stipulates that a territory is governed by the laws of the state to which it belongs during that state's rule over the territory. International courts apply intertemporal law to account for changes in international law since the formulation of treaties and changes in the meaning of treaty expressions.
Alright, let's read it again. I got applicability of legal norms over time. So, intertemporal is about time. So in this case, we're reading about what? Spain had colonized the Western Sahara. Right, that's a period of time. Right? And then the Western Sahara also used to be a part of what? The Empire Morocco. That's a period of time. So you're talking about all these different times. Now what's the new time they're talking about? The time after what? Nineteen forty-five? When the Charter of the United Nations set forth what? Contemporary international law. Under Articles seventy-three and seventy-four, the Charter of the United Nations allowed for indigenous people to declare their independence and emerge as a sovereign, independent state, et cetera. In addition to that, in nineteen sixty, Resolution fourteen fifteen came out. Right? Excuse me, fifteen fourteen, right, of nineteen sixty, right? Just correct myself. Fifteen fourteen, nineteen sixty. So now the judge is saying, we gotta look at all these different eras of time that's going on. Cause we got contemporary law, and you got these ancient lands that had a bunch of colonization going on, exchanges of treaties that recognized who was the sovereign over the territories. So the judge is saying, we gotta break all this stuff down. How do they do that when they're talking about different timeframes of what's going on of people who was claiming possessions of territories? What word do they use? It's called what? Intertemporal. Intertemporal international law. Right, so I'll read it. Intertemporal international law governs the applicability of legal norms over time. Cause over time, law evolves. It stipulates that a territory is governed by the laws of the state to which it belongs during that state's rule over the territory. About that time when the state was ruling. International courts apply intertemporal law to account for changes in international law since the formulation of treaties and changes in the meaning of treaties expressions. So, treaties may say one thing, and then international law may say another. So you have to figure out, okay, how do you bring these two things together? Because the colonists had colonized the world, and the Arabs did a good job of colonizing as well. And now they're saying under contemporary law, all the indigenous people have a right to do what? Decolonize and, and proclaim and take possession of their own lands. So the judge is like, okay, we gotta figure out what's going on with these two timeframes in the rears and moving forward. Okay? Listen. Let's read a little bit more. Moors gotta understand this. We gotta study law. Moors keep talking about we're the lawmakers and the law givers, and let's study law. Okay, from the top, Brother Dre?
Uh, intertemporal law. Um, intertemporal law regulates the conflict of laws relating to time. It determines which law is applicable at which time, and specifically, the applicability of a rule to the cases that occurred before its creation or entry into force.
Alright, so it's about, it's about time. Inter, intertemporal regulates the conflict of laws relating time. So you have the King Morocco trying to make claims, Mauritania is making claims, Spain is making claims, and then you got the indigenous Moors also trying to make claims. You got four parties trying to make claims to one piece of territory, and it's all based in different times in history that they're coming together saying, okay, who has a right to claim to this land? And the Moors saying, we do. We've been here since time immemorial. Just because a land's been colonized by more than one colonizer, doesn't mean we lose our right of claim to the land. So now the Moors get to come and say, because of international law, we get to enforce the Charter of the United Nations cause our rights are guaranteed in the Charter of the United Nations under Articles seventy-three and seventy-four, so we have a right to emerge as a people to self-govern. Also, you realize Resolution fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty gives you a right to also do what? Declare your country and people as what? Decolonized, to be independent, to self-govern. Regardless of what took place in the past, the colonists can't keep making claims. Arabs can't make claims either. Why? Cause they're not indigenous. You see what's happening?
Yep.
Hey, listen. Continue to read.
Intertemporal law is based on the idea that an action is governed by the law enforced at the local time of its occurrence. It is therefore irrelevant. For example, that a legal question is only decided by a court at a later point in time when the previously applicable law is no longer valid. This principle is described by the Latin phrase, tempus regit actum, uh, actum, which can be translated as time governs the act. Meaning that the applicable law is determined by the time of the event in question. For jurisdictions with multiple time zones, the local time of the action determines the applicable law. In the United States, this principle has been codified in Section fifteen USC subsection two sixty-two.
Okay, so intertemporal law is determined, determined by the time of the event in question. So what's happening with the Moors? When you use international law to your advantage, that's the time of event where you use the applicable law of the present day to get your rights. So the Moors have to understand, it's all about what? It's about what? Determine by the time of the event in question. What event is taking place in the year of twenty twenty-four? We're starting to decolonize the Empire Morocco by using what? International law. You see? Cause international law supports indigenous people. This is what the Moors should use as their legal argument. The Moors have never been reading the Charter of the United Nations. Black people don't read the Charter of the United Nations. Moors don't read Resolution fifteen fourteen. Black people don't read Resolution fifteen fourteen either. They never understood the present time in question. You keep questioning white people, and white people know the time of question, the event in question. And you're asking for rights? Then rights means what is the law? What law should black people be using? What, what law should Moors be using? You should be using international law cause the event in question is, you want to do what? Decolonize. Listen. Okay, let's come down here to intertemporal public international law. Okay. Brother Dre?
Intertemporal public international law. Intertemporal international law stipulates that territory is governed by the laws of the state to which it belongs for the duration of that state's rule over the territory.
So, it's all about international laws. It's about the state is ruling the territory. Right now, the United States of America is ruling over what? Empire Morocco. That's a timeframe, and they've been doing that. So they have what? A legal title under colonization, right, and nationalization to hold on to the territory under a period of time. Okay. That's called colonization. How do you decolonize? Well, in the present event, the present time, you must use what to decolonize? How do you accelerate decolonization? By using the Charter of the United Nations and Resolution fifteen fourteen. You see what's happening? Listen.
In international law, this principle can be traced back to the island of, to the Island of Palmas case, which was decided by Max Huber acting as arbitrator for the Permanent Court of Arbitration in nineteen twenty-eight. The decision starts by stating, "The tempus regit actum, a juridical fact must be appreciated in the light of the law contemporary with it and not of the law enforced at the time such a dispute in regard to it arises or falls to be settled."
Okay, let's pause right there. What is he talking about in this case of Island Palmas case? We gotta look this up. We gotta do research, Moors. Alright, so intertemporal, Judge Castro is bringing this word up for a reason. Cause he's talking about Moors. He's talking about the Sultan. He's talking about time, what? Time of possession. Someone's got possession over the land. That's the colonist. How do you get rid of the colonist? You use international law to get rid of the colonist's possession. Now he mentions the case, cause he's telling the Moors, go back and look at intertemporal. Judge Castro is telling the Moors, go back and look at what? Intertemporal? And now on the intertemporal, you go back and look at this Island Palmas case? Who was in the case? Okay, listen. Who's in that case? Okay, now I'm going to reference point. Oxford reference. Oxford. Okay, Oxford. Still talking about what? Intertemporal law. Okay. Brother Dre?
Intertemporal law. Quick reference. The law that international courts apply when a long time has elapsed since the conclusion of a treaty to take into account changes that have taken place in international law since the treaty was formulated and changes in the meaning of the expressions in the treaty. The existence of a right, i.e. to a territorial claim, should be based not only on the law in effect at the time the right was created, but also on the international law as applied to the continued existence of that right. The legitimacy of a title to territory, uh, of a title to territory must be renewed by the claimant. The classic application of intertemporal law to a dispute can be found in the Island of Palmas arbitration, Netherlands versus US nineteen twenty-eight.[1735.70]
So the United States was in a case of dealing with the Netherlands. And it was raised a question about this word, intertemporal. It's about possession. Who has to write a claim of sovereignty over a territory? Okay, based in time, based in time. Okay, listen, from the top.
Island of Palmas case, the United States versus the Netherlands. Brief fact summary.
Pause. So everywhere you see the United States, you see the P, the P represents what? Planted. Everywhere you see the D, the D represents what? Defendant. Alright? The United States was the plaintiff, Netherlands was the defendant. Okay? Alright, so we won't say the P and the D, we just skip right over that, okay? Alright, let's, let's brief that.
Alright, brief fact summary. Both the United States laid claim to the ownership of the Island of Palmas while the U.S. maintained that it was a part of the Philippines. The Netherlands claimed it as their own. Synopsis of rule of law. A title that is inchoate cannot prevail over a definite title found on the continuous and peaceful display of sovereignty.
Read again.
A title that is inchoate cannot prevail over a definite title found on the continuous and peaceful display of sovereignty.
Alright, continue.
Issue. Can a title which is inchoate prevail over a definite title found on the continuous and peaceful display of sovereignty?
That's the issue at hand. Okay, let's go back and read the question. Issue. Can a title, what type of title? Someone's claiming sovereignty over land. Alright, it's a, it's a, it's a question of possession. Right, it's a material fact, it's a controversy. Alright, so they're talking title sovereignty, so read again, issue.
Issue. Can a title which is inchoate prevail over a definite title found on the continuous and peaceful display of sovereignty?
Here's the answer.
And the answer, hell, no. A title that is inchoate cannot prevail over a definite title found on the continuous and peaceful display of sovereignty. The peaceful and continuous display of territorial sovereignty is as good as title. However, discovery alone without subsequent act cannot suffice to prove sovereignty over the island. The territorial sovereignty of the Netherlands was not contested by anyone from seventeen hundred to nineteen oh six. The title of discovery at best and inchoate title does not therefore prevail over the Netherlands' claims of sovereignty.
Alright, so what's this all about? Okay, what's the definition of inchoate? It's an adjective, okay, brother Dre from the top.
Inchoate, adjective, just begun and so not fully formed or developed. Rudimentary, still inchoate democracy, confused or incoherent.
Alright, so inchoate means just begun and not fully formed or developed rudimentary, right? So what does inchoate really mean in law? Alright, what does inchoate mean? Inchoate means that under the rule of discovery, doctrine of discovery, you know if they use the word discovery? Listen to me, Moors, this is very important for the Moors to understand. Under doctrines of discovery, alright, let's read it from the top, I got it. Let's read the issue. What's the issue at hand? The United States was trying to claim some land and the Netherlands said, no, you can't do that. Netherlands said, no, we, we have sovereignty. The United States said, no, we got sovereignty. But sovereignty can't be based in what? Doctrines of discovery. So doctrine of discovery means colonization in terms of time. Colonizers might come in and claim territory under time, but that title under colonization or discovery cannot supersede or prevail over indigenous people or someone else's claim that had to claim first. Colonization or discovery does not supersede someone else's original claim to a territory. Alright, let's read it again. Issue. Can a title which is inchoate prevail over a definite title found on the continuous and peaceful display of sovereignty? Hell, no. A title that is inchoate, inchoate cannot prevail over a definite title found on the continuous and peaceful display of sovereignty. The peaceful and continuous display of territorial sovereignty is as good as a title. So colonialism is as good as a title. Listen, listen to what it says next. However, see the word however? However, discovery alone without subsequent act cannot suffice to prove sovereignty over the island. You see that? In other words, colonialism may give you a temporary title, but it's not definite title. It's not absolute title, you see? Indigenous people have absolute title to the land. You gotta understand what's happening here. Right? So under in- intertemporal, Justice Castro is telling the Moors, you have a right to claim to the land as Moors as long as you recognize the sovereignty and finished state. And the colonialism has an expiration date. It cannot prevail over the Moors' pro- proclaimed to the land as long as they pledge allegiance to the state. Okay, listen, alright, now let's read what Justice Castro was talking about with this question of intertemporal law, meaning the Moors have a right to make a claim whenever they want because they're the indigenous people. It made no difference what colonizers say. It made no difference what the Arabs say. Because the Arabs are also claim claiming land under what? Colonialism. Settlement, annexation, capitulation, you see? This is what's happening. Moors can decolonize whenever they want because they indigenous people to the land. They have definite title, absolute title. Everybody else got temporary title. You see what I'm saying? And if the Moors want to accelerate decolonization, they must use international law as their legal argument, you see? So here comes Justice Castro about this question about intertemporal law. He's trying to tell the Moors how to make a proper claim. Okay, from the top, Nova.
Two, questions of intertemporal law. To perform the task entrusted to it by the General Assembly, namely that of casting light on the true difficulty that arose during the discussion. The court ought, in my view, to have made clear that could have been the potential strength of the ties referred to at the time of the colonialization of the territory by Spain. Did they have the validity of acquired rights, unaltered by the passage of time or the contingent rights case law, which could still be exercised? Or were they subject to the rules of intertemporal law? The question is not a new one. It is a question of the validity of historical rights.
Alright, so now Judge De Castro says, it's about the validity of historic rights. That's what it's about. So Justice Castro is talking about the historic ties to Morocco. But what about Morocco? The Empire Morocco, not the kingdom. The King Morocco is not historic as a name. The land might be historic, but the King Morocco using a brand new name on planet Earth. They can't go back retroactively and claim historic lands under the Empire Morocco when they're no longer using that name anymore, you see? So Justice Castro is saying these Moors got a right to declare their independence and self-govern. Because at the time in nineteen seventy-five, there was no more Sultan. And the Empire Morocco was in a shallow grave. So now I left the Moors, okay, what do we do now? So now those Moors were declaring their independence under the Western Sahara as the Western Sahari people. And the King of King Morocco was trying to still claim that land even though he was a king and not Sultan. Listen, it's gonna get very interesting. So look what the words Judge De Castro using. He says, a question of the validity of historic rights. What about historic rights? Guess who had historic rights? The Moors and the Sultan. Now you go back to the Treaty of the Act of the Saras of nineteen oh six. In the Treaty of the Act of the Saras of nineteen oh six, who was the master of the land? Who was the sovereign authority over the land? And who were the people of the land? What did the Europeans recognize in nineteen oh six based in historic events? Okay, listen, now you come down to what? Come down here to Article one. What does Article one, right off the top, tell you about historical events, right? Matter of fact, let's go to the preamble. It's all about the preamble. That's what I meant to say. What's the preamble say? Uh, Nova.
Inspired by the interest attached, attaching itself to the reign of order, peace and prosperity in Morocco and recognizing that the attainment thereof can only be affected by means of the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereignty and independence of His Majesty the Sultan, the integrity of his domains and economic liberty without any inequality have resolved upon the invitation of His Serifian Majesty.
Pause, read again. What's the triple principle? What would the Europeans recognizing in this treaty? They were recognizing His Majesty the Sultan as being the independent sovereign over all the Empire Morocco. You see what's happening? Nineteen oh six. Okay, let's read it again from the top.
Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace and prosperity in Morocco and recognizing that the attainment thereof can only be affected by means of the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereignty and independence of His Majesty the Sultan, the integrity of his domains and economic liberty without any inequality have resolved upon the invitation of His Serifian Majesty to call together a conference at Al Jazeera for the purpose of arriving at an understanding upon the said reforms as well as examining the means for obtaining the resources necessary for their application and have appointed as their delegates plenty of potentially the following.
Alright, so before we read the following, before we jump to Article one, this is all about the Europeans were recognizing the Sultan of Morocco as being the sovereign and independent ruler over the entire Empire Morocco. What's the Empire Morocco? Europe, America, Africa, surrounding islands, et cetera. And the Sultan oversaw all that. That's nineteen oh six. But then the Sultan stepped down out of his office in nineteen fifty-six. Mohammed the Fifth left the office of Sultan vacated. And it wasn't a Sultan from nineteen fifty-six until twenty twenty-four for sixty-eight years that hasn't been a Sultan overseeing the Empire Morocco. And the Europeans have run rogue with the empire by the empire, the Moors not being in their sovereign positions. The whole world been in chaos. You see what's happening? It's mayhem. Now listen, we're gonna jump down to Article one. Justice Castro is talking about this. He's talking about what? The validity of history. Okay, what happened in history? Okay. Article one tells you already, who runs the show? Okay, Nova, Article one.
Article one, the conference summoned by His Majesty the Sultan to pronounce on the measures necessary to organize, the police declares that the following provision should be made.
Pause, read again.
Article one, the conference summoned by His Majesty the Sultan to pronounce on the measures necessary to organize, the police declares that the following provision should be made.
So who's doing the summons? Who's summoning people? It said, the conference summoned. The conference summoned by His Majesty the Sultan to pronounce on the measures necessary to organize the police. Declare that the following provisions should be made. The Sultan summoned who? All the Europeans. Right, what does Article two say?
Article two, the police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. It shall be recruited by the Maghson from Moish Mohammedans, commanded by Moish Cades and distributed in the eight ports open to commerce.
So the Sultan is overseeing the Empire Morocco and then the Sultan, who put in, who, who did the Sultan put in charge? The Moors. You see that? It's nineteen oh six. This is validity of a treaty in time. In nineteen oh six, the Sultan and the Moors will be running the entire empire as a collective, as a collective. And you know who agreed to this? All the European states. Just a moment. Who agreed? European states. Let's go down to it. Alright, so who signed the treaty? Okay. Who signed the treaty? Who recognized His Majesty as the sovereign independent ruler of the Empire Morocco? It was Germany, Austria-Hungary, Belgium, Spain, the United States of America, France, Great Britain, Italy, and the Netherlands, right? Portugal, Russia, and Sweden, right? All these Europeans recognized His Majesty the Sultan as having all these powers. Let's go back to it. So all the European powers, United States of America in Article one, United States of America was summoned. The conference summoned by His Majesty the Sultan, right? So who did the Sultan summon? United States of America. Who did the Sultan summon? France, Great Britain, Italy, Spain, Netherlands, Denmark, you name it. He summoned them because he was a sovereign over all these territories. Matter of fact, the Sultan was so powerful, he was so powerful, the office of Sultan was so powerful. Guess what they did next in the year nineteen twelve after they signed this treaty? The Sultan turned around and signed another treaty in nineteen twelve. Just about five, six years later, nineteen twelve, the Sultan was so powerful that he put France in charge of the Empire Morocco. He put the French Republic in charge of the Empire Morocco. And France ran the whole world from nineteen twelve to nineteen fifty-six. France ran the whole world for forty-four years. That's how powerful the office of Sultan is. That the Sultan said, you know what? I will let France run the whole world for me. And that's what France did. And all the European powers recognized France as being what? The representative of the Sultan of Morocco. All the Europeans recognized. Under the French protector, that's right. Now do you understand why the Europeans don't like talking about the office of Sultan? Because the Sultan is so powerful. Justice Castro is talking about the Sultan and the Moors. He's talking about how do these Moors get their sovereign rights back? You have to, you have to do emerge as a sovereign independent state, but what's named a state? Empire Morocco. What's the nationality? Moroccan. Who's had a state? The Sultan. So when the Sultan and the Moors come together and utilize their treaties of old and utilize new international law, the combination of the two is very powerful. This is what Justice Castro is talking about. You gotta use the combination of old treaties and new international law, put them together. This is what's happening. Okay, listen, because this is why the grand sheiks won't tell you about the Sultan because the grand sheiks don't want to know about the Sultan. Grand sheiks gonna lose their seats because the Sultan is the sovereign and not the grand sheiks. Listen, listen, I ain't done. Okay, so going back to Judge De Castro, he's talking about, right, the question of intertemporal law is about the validity, the validity of historic rights. Remember I told you the rights is tied to what? Laws. What laws can the Moors prove? They can prove they got all these Moors treaties. They can prove that the Sultan is the sovereign authority over all these territories. Keep in mind, the Sultan was so powerful when he put France in charge in nineteen twelve. France ran all of Europe. France ran all of the Americas. France ran, ran all of Africa. France ran all the surrounding islands. France ran the world. All because the Sultan gave France a power of the pen to act like a de facto Sultan. So if the Sultan was that powerful, that even the other Europeans recognize the fact that France was just a representative on behalf of the Sultan and all the Europeans let France run the world, then imagine how powerful the Sultan is when the Sultans are more. Imagine how powerful the Sultan is when the Sultan as a Moor is overseeing the Moorish government. And this is why nobody wants to talk about the Sultan. This is why nobody talks about the Empire Morocco. Nobody talks about decolonization because then you have to talk about the power of the Sultan. Nobody wants to talk about the Sultan. It's absolute power. And they've been trying to hide it from the world. And guess who's been helping them? The grand sheiks. Grand sheiks don't talk about Sultans. Louis Barracan ain't gonna talk about the Sultan of Morocco. HBCU president gonna talk about the Sultan of Morocco? They gonna talk about this during Black History Month? You gotta understand what's happening. We've been sold out. They know about the power of the Sultan. And the Moors, the combination of the two to make what? The validity of historic rights. Talking about you got an HBCU. Ain't no such thing as historically black people. People aren't historically black. People are historically Moors. And the word Moors is a short title for what? Mor- Moroccans. We're Moroccans, we're being sold out by other people to tell us we're names that we are not. We are not Berbers. When you say the word Berber, it's like calling somebody negro, black, and colored, you see what's happening? They call you Berber, they trying to take you out of the treaty, cause the treaty recognized you as being what? Moorish, ain't that correct? Let's go back to the treaty. See, and the treaty is all about the Sultan. That's a proper party name. And it's about who else? It's about who else? All the Moors, Moorish, you see that? But people say, well, it's Moorish Moroccan? Yes, look at the name when I slide it over in French. See what French called it? Moroccans. See that? Moroccan, Moroccan is equivalent to Moorish, you see it? See it? Moorish, Moorish is the Moroccan Moroccan. Therefore, the Sultan is Moroccan. And the Moors been sold out, cause everybody told the Moors that they were what? Americans. Everybody told the Moors they were what? The black man. Everybody told the Moors they were what? Indian. You see what I'm saying? Is the word black man in the treaty? No. Is Moorish American in the treaty? No. Is Cherokee in the treaty? No. Is Indian in the treaty? No. Is Sultan Moor? Moor is a short title for Moroccan. Gotta understand what's happening with Judge Castro is trying to school the Moors on, listen. Okay, uh Brother Dre, pick it up right here.
The court has already had to consider the validity of legal ties in accordance with intertemporal law. In the Menqueers and Ekros case, the court considered that it was not necessary to deal with pointless historical controversies. The court considers it sufficient to state as its view that even if the kings of France did not, I mean, excuse me, the kings of France did have an original feudal title also in respect of the Channel Islands, such a title must have lapsed as a consequence of the events of the year uh twelve, uh twelve oh four and following years. The court thus judged that the original title ceases to be valid if there are new facts to be considered on the basis of new law. The same doctrine has been expressed in the Island of Palmas or Meongga's case. Huber had said, as regards the question which of different legal systems prevailing at successive periods is to be applied in a particular case. The so-called intertemporal law, a distinction must be made between the creation of rights and the existence of rights. The same principle which subjects the act creative of a right to the law enforced at the time the right arises demands that the existence of the right, in other words, its continued manifestation shall follow the conditions required by the evolution of law.
Alright. So here he's talking about the continuation, right? Let's take it from the top. Notice in the case they brought up the word Island of Palmas. You see, I read that out loud to you guys, and the Island of Palmas was United States involved with, the United States could not claim back territory under what? Colonization or doctrines of discovery. They kicked that out. Now Judge De Castro is bringing it up. And so now this brother named Huber, Huber had said, as regards the question which of different legal systems prevailing at successive periods is to be applied in particular case, the so-called intertemporal law. A distinction must be made between the creation of rights and the existence of rights. So the creation of rights and the already existence of rights. So existing rights, then new creation of rights. So what was the existing rights? The fact that the Moors in the Act of the Sarus, that the Sultan and the Moors were supposed to be the independent sovereigns of the Empire Morocco. But in a new rights, what is there in new rights? Now all the Moors had to do is use what? International law of the United Nations Charter, Article seventy-three and seventy-four along with what? Resolution what? Fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty in order to do what? Retroactively go back and grab your existing rights and bring it straight into the future. Down to international law. You're bringing both the old law and the new law together to create what? A continuous state. It's an ancient state that's now in a continuous status, to be now on their modern state status. So an ancient state now using modern law to gain its rights. You see what's happening? Read it again. As rewards, the question should be different legal system prevailing at successive periods. Is to be applied in particular case, so this first sentence, listen to it says, as regards the question which of different legal systems. So what legal systems is international law enforcing for indigenous people? It's the Charter of the United Nations, Article seventy-three, seventy-four, and Resolution fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty. See what's happening? That's the new legal system. Read it again. As regards the question which of different legal systems prevailing at the successive periods. What is succeeding in international law? The Charter and Resolution fifteen fourteen. Is to be applied in a particular case. Moors never applied it. Moors never applied the Charter of the United Nations. And Moors never applied Resolution fifteen fourteen to get their rights. Black people never applied the Charter of the United Nations. And black people never applied Resolution fifteen fourteen. Listen. The so-called intertemporal law, a distinction must be made between the creation of rights and the existence of rights. Existence and new creation. When the Moors can become the masters of master your treaties of the old law and the new law of international law, when you bring these two together, that's a powerful combination, listen. The same principle which subjects the act creative of a right to the law enforced at the time the right arises demands that the existence of that right, in other words, its continued manifestation shall follow the conditions required by the evolution of law. So even though international law continues to evolve, the manifestation of the Moors treaties continues on continuously into new law. But guess what the Moors had to do? We had to go back and do what? Reclaim it. We never went back to pledge our allegiance to the Empire Morocco. Didn't we? Did we follow the instructions of the treaty? Listen, listen Moors, please, you gotta listen to me. Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. Giving the more specific instructions of what we had to do under intertemporal law. You go down to what? Article fifteen, Moors, listen to me. You gotta follow the instructions, Moors. This is what Judge De Castro is trying to tell you. Go back and enforce your treaties in addition to using contemporary international law. This is what the Moors obligation was, right here, Article fifteen, paragraph one, Brother Dre.
Rattle protection in Morocco, July third eighteen eighty, Article fifteen. Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco.
So Article fifteen tells you that the Moors have to enforce their existing treaties which is existing law in addition to new created laws of international law. But what else is a new created law? In harmony with Article fifteen is what? The Constitution of the Empire Morocco. Listen, with the creation of a new law. The Constitution for the Empire Morocco was the new law that maintains the continuation of an ancient state now has a modern constitution, cause everybody in modern law after nineteen forty-five needed what? A constitution, cause constitution is what? Paramount. What does paramount mean? First. Without the constitution that recognized Empire Morocco's state and the nationality of Moroccan, then the Moors always stayed in a primitive uncivilized status as barbarians, as Berbers. Barbary treaties. They talked about your Barbary treaties was the answer to the test the whole time. Enforce your old treaties with new international law, put the two together. Moors never did it. They never did it. So under this new law, this is the new what? Law of what? The empire, so now let's go back to the Treaty of eighteen eighty, listen. Treaty of eighteen eighty, listen. It said the Moors have to do what? Any subject of Morocco that's been naturalized shall return to Morocco and do what? Choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire. What's the law of the empire? It's the Constitution, that's the new existing law, right? That's the new existing law. That you use to tie back to existing law, the past. Now you got new created law, you put the two together. Intertemporal law recognizes your old rights as well as your new rights, as long as you know how to put the two together. Let's take it to the board. As I start to close out. If the Moors want sovereignty, then they must adhere to Article thirty-eight, section C of the Statutes of the International Court of Justice as follows. What is Article thirty-eight, section C about? It's about the general principles of international law recognized by civilized nations. What do civilized nations do? They recognize their state constitution. And the nationality of said state. Now you losing what? Contemporary international law, the principles of it. Okay, so here's the question. How do Moors emerge as a civilized nation of people? Answer, the Moors must unite under the nationality of Moroccan and pledge our allegiance to the Empire Morocco as a continuous ancient and modern state per the principles of international law. So you bring what? You bring all your ancient, right? Ancient ways and customs, all your ancient treaties, right? Into what? A modern status, cause you're enforcing international law through a contemporary brand new constitution that recognizes what? The state, the brand new state on paper, but it's an ancient land. That's enforcing new laws through a constitution that ties back to your treaty. So you gotta bring your treaties into the future. So what's it called? Back to the future, you see? This is what Moors gotta understand. Judge Castro's been telling the Moors the truth there since nineteen seventy-five. Fifty years have elapsed. But yet in nineteen seventy-five, Judge Castro told you how to accelerate your rights. But instead, the Moors have done what? Relaxed, back into the Piscean era. Moors don't wanna move into Aquarius. Which Moors? The Moors that's in charge of you and your life. Grand Sheiks? People that run these Masonic temples? All the these communities, everybody in charge of all these quote-unquote black communities all come from what? Religious organizations. And religious organizations is stuck in the past and they don't wanna move to the future, cause they don't wanna give up their comfy titles. Their job is to keep us stuck in the past. But those days are over. We, we gonna, we gonna decolonize now. We know the answer to the test, I wanna say thank you to uh good brother Judge uh De Castro of Spain for helping the Moors to understand what is our sovereign rights? How do we go about making an independent claim to get our sovereignty? Right, this is what we gotta understand, we, we, we as Moors have delayed our own justice. Stop blaming white people for our problems. White people know the answer to the test. What white people am I talking about? The ones who sit in the office of governments of all these European states, they know. Who else knows? All the Arabs who sit in all those high offices as well. The whole world knows what the Moors had to do. The whole world knows. So what did the Europeans do? They put Stephen Candies in charge of all of us. And Stephen Candy has kept us in the field. But those days are over, now we gonna emerge, we gonna rise. We gonna rise up as Moors. The time of capitulations is over. The time of procrastination is over. No more posturing, we shall decolonize. That must be understood. I end with that.
Islam.
Islam.